Welcome everyone. Today is Monday, August 12th, 2024. This is the regular meeting of the Rutland Town Select Board and we're doing it today instead of tomorrow because tomorrow is primary election day. So, um, welcome to all of you who are joining. Um, we have with us today, three select board members alive and live in person. Joe Donardo, Mary Ashcroft, and Sharon Russell. So please rise and join me for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. Let's, we keep trying to pass a couple of select board minutes.
Nope.
And one is for
Nope.
We can't do it?
Nope.
No corn for either?
Yeah, there's three of us, but we weren't all at the same meeting.
Okay.
So they, yeah, the July 2nd.
So we'll pass over the July 2nd.
And the July 30th.
And the July 30th. We'll try again. It's meeting. Okay. Any board member announcements? Matt? Kurt? No? Okay. Um, update from the select board chair. Welcome back to Bill. We have more stuff than usual on the desk because we, Bill wasn't here to help us mail out packets. There are some things that we do have and we'll go over. Okay. Oh, and a big thank you to all of those volunteers who showed up Monday, I believe it was, to stuff the tax bills into envelopes and prepare the whole thing for mailing. So, thank you all. Um, it was a good group that came in and I won't release names in case people didn't like their tax bills and take it out on those who participated in the mailing, but one comment I did hear was that the tax increase was not as bad as expected. So thanks all around to all of those who helped with that. Uh, do we have any questions from the floor or public comments from anyone in the room?
Did you want to mention the townwide celebration on Saturday, the 24th?
Yeah, let's do, okay.
Cause we won't meet and get until after.
Yeah, Joey reminds me that we need to mention, um, townwide celebration, which is set for Saturday, August 24th. Um, that's coming up in a week and a half and we hope you can all be there. It should be a great event. Lots of, lots of displays from our town departments and from others. And, um, we've got the caterpillar ride, except it's not that. Maybe it is caterpillar. What is it? Whatever he calls it. Huh? Okay, okay. Um, we have fire trucks. We have the police radar. We have the sheriffs coming. We might have lifelight. We'll see. That's always a last minute thing. Um, we have lots of food. Sharon and I and Matt are cooking and anyone else who, we're going to be doing a presentation. A plaque commemorating the founders of Northwood Park. So join us for that as well. We have a DJ. We have free swimming and all sorts of things. So just a reminder, please do join us on August 24th. It's also the farewell to the swimming pool's last day, or is the last day the next day? No, last day is Saturday, the 24th. Okay.
Fireworks in the evening.
And fireworks, sorry, fireworks in the evening. So that'll remind you that you missed it if you look up and you see fireworks on Saturday. So mark it in your calendar so you don't. Okay, um, that gave us time for anyone who wanted to say anything to raise your hand or if you're not otherwise on the agenda. Uh, I don't see anybody who wants to participate on Zoom or in the room, so we'll move on. Um, Mike Delahanty, town first constable, not is not here and not in the room. Ed Dumas, town police chief. Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you.
Talk about that.
Okay. And the numbers.
Oh.
Okay. Okay, chief, what are we looking at?
Which one would you like to look over first?
Oh, let's do the shorter one.
The shorter one?
Yeah.
Uh, the stats for, uh, the month of July. So monthly cases, 156, uh, 141 were in the area of the southern end of the town. So we spent about 90%, 90% of our time down towards that end of the town. That's the most we spent this year so far.
Yeah. Okay.
There's only two of us doing it right now. We had, we had some, uh, a couple, a few lodgings actually, uh, pursuits. Had to fight with somebody. We've had a busy month down there.
How are you holding up with the police officers you do have?
Oh, Ted and I are doing good.
That's it in this term, right?
Yeah. Jimmy's doing fantastic with the train and his dog. He, he works.
And how's Rooster doing?
He's doing, he's doing very well.
Okay.
From what I've been told, uh, we've got a little snippet that he showed some demonstrations of how he's doing, he's doing. Or I'm excited for, for Jimmy and the Rooster and what he can do for the community. Unfortunately, a dog's life is pretty short, so it's important to get him out there and do it now. But we have a really good officer who's really applies himself to this and we always have a saying that the intelligence of the dog, intelligence of the dog runs down the leash. So we have a pretty smart dog.
And school resource officer, any interest in the position?
We do. We have one person who applied and, uh, we've been kind of busy, so I haven't really had an opportunity to really pursue that. Uh, Sarah Teslov has reached out to me. I think I told her we have one in the pike right now, but is it gonna be done by the time the school gets here? Probably, probably not.
Okay. And the other position that is open that we, the select board asked you to start looking?
CFAC position, we
There's that, yeah.
We did the numbers on it and if it's a family needs a family plan and they want to work, they, the CFAC wants them to work 40 hours a week. It, I mean, it's only comes out to like 16, a little over $16 an hour I can pay somebody and that, we're not going to get anybody for that. So we're kind of waiting. They were looking into the other extra 20 grand to see if that's still out there. I haven't heard anything from Mary yet.
Okay.
Uh, if anything, it would be, it might be a part-time position.
And that was part of the question to them too. Would they be okay with that?
So we have, I'm kind of like waiting to hear from them on that.
Okay. And the additional officer for, you know, uncommitted for other organizations for our own department?
Uh, I think during the last bit of the, uh, best, of the background right now.
Okay, okay.
Then it'll be up to you folks.
Good, good. Thank you. Um, all right. And the longer version?
Longer version, we had, let's see, 131 filed for service, uh, all sorts of stuff. Any questions on, let me know, the usual. But we have spent a lot of time in the Cortina. Also, when you get down there, I got one other little bit of information about the South End that happened today.
You need to go into executive?
No, that can, that can wait till the end.
Yeah, we'll cut that at the end. Okay. Any questions from anyone on the lengthy report or the shorter report? Okay.
So we had to go down for a drug overdose today at the Cortina. Somebody having a seizure. Apparently they got a hold of some bad crack from what you determined and had a seizure. Yes.
What is good crack?
I, I don't know. But it doesn't give you a seizure, I guess. I don't know.
Okay.
Maybe that is good crack. I don't know. He had a bad reaction to whatever. And at the same time, uh, the state had the, the state health department had a team of four people, two working together, going through, going room to room. Uh, I was told they were taking pictures and had a checklist and went and asked a lot of residents what they thought about certain things and apparently from what I was told, the residents were quite, uh, telling them what it was all about. So I heard that the owner was indisposed. He was not in town today. He was in New York.
Well.
It's, uh, unusual. It seems to be nobody in charge and he's not there. The place kind of runs itself. And that's not good.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Pedophiles at the front desk.
Wonder if that part went right over the people from the state's head, that there was this place with a hundred and some odd rooms rented, all of these individuals, kids and families and people there, and there's no management.
Right.
They might not even notice that.
They might not. They're too worried about the black mold, any leaky pipes, uh, things not working.
Which is good.
Yeah.
That's what they were doing.
Yeah.
Then, uh, and then we spent another two and a half hours down there dealing with a, a domestic assault issue with a woman or three children. One of the children was assaulted. And we called DCF, got them involved. And the stench in that room was
Yeah.
I can't even explain to you. A barn doesn't smell that bad. There you go. Cow barn, pig barn doesn't smell that bad. Yeah.
Had DCF been in that room, do you know?
They were that day.
Okay.
They came at my request that they work on a different, different level than we do, but they accepted the complaint and actually my call up, working with CFAC so close throughout the years, I had numbers to people. So I was able to make some few phone calls and they came right down and helped us out. And they, they were able to help the family, me, that's most important.
We still, let's see, we have not heard, seen a written response from the letter that town council sent to Cortina. We did have Truven here last meeting to respond to the comments about illegally parked cars or too many cars constituting a junkyard.
Yeah.
But town council, we, we also need to check back in with town council about, um, the next letter, um, to the state officials, because I think they said we should check in with them in August.
Right.
So it is now August.
August have gone. We also had a complaint at the, the Diamond Run Mall. Uh, somebody free, I think Fidiam or Comcast, one of the two, uh, broke into the place and messed with their wires. And wanted to make a complaint to us, called the state police. I told them, contact their private security company, sensor security. That's who needs to handle this complaint. That's their issue, not mine. So.
These summers come and gone. We haven't heard from them either.
No, and that was August too.
August, yeah.
But like I said, which August?
We, they got 17, 18 days. Right. They got another meeting.
Okay.
Yeah.
So you'll be around for executive session toward the end of the evening? Okay. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Questions for our chief of police? If not, thank you.
Thanks, I do.
Uh, is John Paul Fagnant on? Okay.
Barbara did say she was not coming to the conference tonight.
Okay, so Barbara, um, noise pulling town planning commission chair is not on. Mike Rowe, town rec director is here, live and in person.
Well, good evening. How are you?
Evening.
Um, I don't know where to start. Uh, we've had a couple of, uh, we need to schedule a rec committee meeting. Um, hopefully next week, whatever is convenient. I'd like to do it before I go back to school. So if we could do that, if you would talk with Matt, it works best for Matt.
Okay.
We have a couple of topics.
I
To, so if you could figure that out and then let Bill know. Bill, how much time do we need to warn the?
Four eight hours.
Four eight hours. Okay. Uh, we just have a couple of things such as, um, we've had a couple of malfunctions at the pool that need to be taken care of with depreciation and then just kind of some wrap up and moving forward for the fall season that I'd just like to address. So if we could schedule that, that would be great. Um, as Mary said, last day, the pool is 24th. We will be closing at the 25th, which means it's going to be 90 degrees hot and a line of people waiting to get in when there's no pool and a cover on it. So if we move quick enough, we might be able to put the cover on Saturday night. So we can just not go Sunday. No, that's oh, it might if we move quickly, depending on the mood they're in. No, but Sunday would be the day that we will close on that. So the next meeting, I'll have that sad news to tell you. That means that summer's over and school is starting, which is not a problem, but that is such the way of the world. Everything else, soccer signups are ongoing and that started, uh, that'll start soon, which is good, um, with our kids that are wanting to play. Mowing is mowing. It's now that we've had this nice cool weather and the grass really just wants to green up again and grow again, which is great because it makes everything look really good. The place is being used non-stop. I mean, it seems like it gets busier every day, which is a good thing, which is what it's for. Uh, and that's just a real positive. I haven't really noticed a lot of dogs off anymore. People are pretty conscious about that. Mostly they're gonna be, but, but for the most part, it seems like if they see me, they quickly put their leash on. That's number one. Two, they, uh, you know, people are being a lot more respectful, um, with how things are going. So I guess as far as the townwide celebration goes, we're all set with that. Bill, you're going to, I'm assuming be, uh, appointed as the bringing the grill from the fire department?
Probably.
I'm just letting you know, you can bring that up anytime you want. Mine's right there, ready to go. So we will need two. Bill did get, say he got some other tents, so we should have four tents anyway. So for anybody that needs that, I did, uh, email you about, um, maybe setting up a table or something for the seniors to sign up.
Do we have any volunteer willing to sit out there or just a table?
I mean, maybe I could put an eighth grader, the eighth graders that are coming up, they could, um, possibly make a sign and, and man the table and
Sure.
collect any names. That would be, was my thought, but if you knew of a better way or another way, maybe we could just get some people that aren't on the list.
Okay.
And I can, if it's okay, if you think it's okay to have a list there already of the names that I have, would that be acceptable? Cause then they could say, am I on the list?
I would start.
You know what I mean?
Say, you can just say, we'll double check, but, but even if you are, we may not have your current contact information. So please put it down. Yeah.
Okay. I have, I have no problem with that. I just, um, so we'll hope to do something probably in September. Once I get a little bit better list, we'll try to figure something out. I'm just trying to think what else.
And the plaque presentation.
The plaque, yes. So we're gonna need to just promote that at some point. I don't care what time you pick. Um, I will have it up. It is, uh, being printed as we speak, and they said that I will have it by the 22nd. It is a, an acrylic plaque. I think it's 16 by 20. Um, and it's got a white background and then blue lettering and it's similar to what was written with your names on it. And, uh, I think it's going to look really nice. And it's well deserved and well overdue. So, and it will be able to be moved if we have to move it to a different spot, but that seems like the best spot in the park, I don't, or else we would, that people would see it, you know?
I'm going to try to contact those whose names are on there.
Good.
There's several of them that have passed away. So, yeah.
But if they have family members, that would be great.
Family members.
That would be nice. Yeah.
Okay. You're gonna have to let me know and, um,
Oh, the time?
No, on Jesse, who I would call.
Okay. All right. We'll, we'll talk. Okay.
We just want to get as many people that was associated or had their family members associated with that.
Nancy Burgess was really, um, she was really honored about this. I mean, yeah.
Well, I mean, it's like we honor everything else and it just took a long time for this. So it's, it's, I'm just, I'm glad it's happening.
Yeah.
Because everything else is honored. It needs to be honored as well. Other than that, as far as, um, our, um, PD for the fireworks, um, fireworks for people, remember it's dark at about 8:30 now. So I'm assuming 8:45 is probably launch time at this point, uh, weather depending. And so, um, seven o'clock would probably be a good time and we can talk strategy with how we're going to do it and who we let in, not who we let in, but how many we let in. I shouldn't say it that way. Uh, we do gotta make sure that probably someone's by school and whatever. You know, you know the deal. Um, so if, um, she is chief on the line, is, is, uh, is Chris online? Is Clark on the line? Okay. So if we could just relay that to Chris that, you know, he has his guys up there with the trucks and stuff, that would be great.
Okay.
I'm assuming that's the case, but if he would let the boys know that that's happening. Now, is there a cutoff time as far as if it rains? Wash your fingers in the
14 day forecast says 24% chance of rain, temperatures in the mid seventies.
It's gonna be beautiful for the rest of the summer.
That's what the, yeah. And Sunday is 35% chance of rain and 75 degrees. So you won't be happy to hear about the 90 degrees in the pool.
Yeah, I know, but it always will switch. That's also 14 day.
I just lost, you know, that's, my life revolves around three consecutive sunny days.
I'm fully aware of your three consecutive sunny days.
There are no.
Other than that, I don't have much unless, uh, you guys have anything for me.
Any questions?
Just one about, you were mentioning about some of the repairs and stuff.
Yeah.
Um, so some of the things like that pump that you were talking about, do you take that out of the like maintenance portion, not, not out of the depreciation?
We have three things now that need to be fixed.
Okay.
And they're all coming out of depreciation. The fencing over at Dewey, which you approved last time, that's a separate depreciation line item we have is fencing. So that's fine.
Okay.
The, the second one is the, um, filter tanks themselves. They have ballast or laterals in them and it's filled with sand. Well, we're getting sand back into the pool, which means the laterals are broken. Now Alan will do that. They're the only game in town. And they have to find a very small person to fit inside the tanks to clean them out.
Don't make eye contact.
And so I've already conversed with Alan and they don't know, they can't tell which one it is. So they're gonna replace both of them, which happens anyway, and that will solve our problem. And that will be out of depreciation because, and then the last one is
The only reason I
How high are the tanks?
As far as
Well, you're talking about a little person.
Well, no, I'm talking about a little person is that the hole is like, I don't know, maybe that it's not a big hole to get into the tank. The tanks are only well, your height, about that high off the ground. They're not tall. So you, but it's that hole that you have to get into.
Well, well, if
So they haven't figured out. They've done it before. They've done it before. It was many years ago, but he's like, yeah, I had to find a really small guy to get in there and, cause they gotta put the laterals back in when they replaced with the new ones.
The only reason I bring up Mike is that if you have like an equipment maintenance, building maintenance, we're getting to the end of the season. I know you'll start in the spring using the same budget, but if you use that, we wouldn't be giving it back at the end of the year.
I totally agree with that. This, this, um, will come out of depreciation because it's, it's, but this is being done now because I'm not going to wait until the spring and then be like, oh, well.
Right, yeah. And that's not my point. It's
Yeah, I understand your point though.
If you end up next June with three quarters of your maintenance money still in your pocket, it's like you end up getting back.
We'll use that wiser next time. But yes, I, and I totally appreciate that. A lot of these things are like
You know, and especially because yours is seasonal. So you, you get a little bit of summer out of the beginning of your budget and you get a little bit of the beginning of summer out of the end of your budget. And it's a little hard to figure out.
Like Christmas for me is May to July. That's my Christmas time and that falls right in the middle of the budget. Is where I spend most of my money per se. So yes, you are correct. But that's all I have. Unless anybody else is.
For, for the, for the celebration, um, I'm going to be out of town Saturday morning. So I'll be there, be there in the afternoon, but if there's something you need that you should think of ahead of time, let me know by like
Well, you're the ice guy.
Kurt was the ice guy.
Oh, Kurt is the ice guy. That's right. Okay. Well, that was my only question. Cause you can't just drop the ice off and leave it.
Not really.
No, it wouldn't go very well. So Kurt, let's just make sure because we'll be done, just double check with Kurt about the ice.
All right.
That's my only, everything else.
We're pretty good shape. I just
Yeah, we're in good shape with that. Nope, that's fine. We're okay. Will you know if the helicopter's coming before that? Cause people are gonna ask, and if you're not there.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's hit or miss, but they, they will, I will, I will have a watch for an email, try and get confirmation from them. But even now there, it's, it's questionable even on confirmation. So.
Hmm.
Okay. And do you have a diagram that you can give me for where you want things parked and placed? I know you did, and if you're not gonna be there, then that falls back on me and I don't want these guys fighting the fire guys for the prime spot and highway coming and plowing them out of the way with the plow. My spot, you know, that kind of thing. Don't need that. So just
Yeah, we can, we can, we're, we're working, we're working a layout.
Perfect.
Yeah.
All right. And everything will go well then.
Okay.
Otherwise we'll be talking about it in two weeks. All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mike. All right. Larry Delvanary's on. So Larry, town transfer station manager.
Mary, I'm all set. You guys are all set. I have nothing.
You got nothing?
I, I know nothing. Yeah. No, everything's running nice and smooth up there. So if you guys got any questions? I don't have it.
I I don't, um,
Listen, between you and your assistant, that's cleaner than most houses have ever been in.
Supposed to be.
That Italian blood is really good at that.
The, uh, the table's back. The table is back for the, the, you know, recyclables. Have you had any problems lately?
No problems, uh, at all. Uh, I do, I may have a little good news coming up about the household hazardous waste. I'm just waiting to hear from Pam Clapp right now. Uh, the state is setting it up now and we may be getting out of that payment this year or next year. So.
Okay. Well, that is good news. We'll, we'll see what happens with that.
We'll see what happens. I haven't got all the details yet.
Okay. All right. If there's nothing else, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Take care, Joe.
Have a good night.
You. All right. Dave Sears, town road commissioner.
No.
He's not on.
No, yeah, I'm not sure. I hadn't talked to him today, but I didn't know that the last meeting, um, did he run by the board his thoughts on the highway depreciation account? We discussed it at our highway meeting prior to that meeting and I missed the last meeting. So I didn't know what you guys discussed, but one of the topics that we talked about, a lot of things, and I don't remember everything, but because we have expanded into more equipment that we should be thinking about November, just something to think about come November, because I was just reading over the minutes from the, um,
Fire Committee.
You know, with the escalating costs of this equipment that we, we will need to go in the same direction. Um, and, and we did talk at length about replacing the loader. And Dave has some avenues toward different ways of buying equipment. You know how we bought the pickups through the state bid? Um, there's a nationwide purchasing, um, consortium, whatever. I think it's, um, Bidwell or something. I can't remember the name exactly, but
huh?
Sourcewell, sourcewell, maybe that's it. And, um, but just for an instance, he was looking at an excavator and buy it through John Deere. It's like 125 or 30,000. And you can buy it through this source well, which is nationwide for like 95. And so, so there are avenues out there. So we, when it comes time to purchase something like, um, replace the loader, you know, we could do the same similar thing we did with like the fire trucks. Not, we don't have to put them out to bid. You could look through these companies and they'll, whatever machine you want and you'll get a, uh, Whatever machine you want and you'll get a uh like the state bid price.
So in answer to your question, no.
Okay.
We didn't and.
And and the other thing.
So you know, that is coming up.
Right.
How much we juggle going to the voters for, you know, a quarter of a cent, half a cent.
There might be a quarter for a fire and a quarter for.
Well, that's all part of the, is this the year we do it? Is it next year? Do we wait?
We just, we have to look at that because that's, because we did expand to the two bigger trucks now and in in this.
That's true, yeah.
Um, then the other thing that in in a. Expanding into another piece of equipment, and that would be the excavator. And some things that Dave and I and Kurt talked about were in his um, the carryover funds. There's. Two or three hundred, I think it was like three hundred and something thousand. And. One of the things that um Andrew has talked to us about is getting that number down so we're not showing that big amount every year of carryover. So one of the things I thought about, and I wanted, I didn't know if he would mention to the guys was the um, he has a new equipment line. And if we purchased like an excavator out of that equipment, so if we spent the hundred, a hundred and twenty-five thousand but bought it out of new equipment. It would show a deficit in the amount we budgeted, but not the budget because that money's in there and it would help us to manage that. So we would end up getting a piece of equipment without having to go back to the voters to ask for more tax money. So it's just something, so some things to think about, a way of doing that. It kind of satisfies a couple of the ideas so that. You know, it's nice to have a little cushion in highway because of salt. Salt is one of those things. Winter is one of those things that you can't manage. So I would never spend all of the carryover, but if we spent some of it, and and I think he did check with Andrew. And and that's inappropriate.
Okay.
Way to do things. So just a couple of things from that meeting I didn't know.
Okay, well, thank you, Dave Sears. I mean, Joe, for the Dave Sears report.
Yeah.
Um, I do, I did get a call and I was gonna mention it to Dave and I'll pass it instead on to Highway Committee and also to Bill. Um, we had received about six months ago, a call from Flori Heights Neighborhood. About an uneven drop between the road that was repaved and a driveway. So the person has made a couple of requests to Dave. I don't know if he's, you know, not. Not available this week or what, but he really should get back to her.
Yeah, because aprons, aprons and stuff were part of the pro- part of the bid.
Yeah.
So any aprons for driveways should have been done by whoever did the paving, so maybe something got missed.
It could very well.
We have, that's nine o'clock Monday, right? Or Wednesday. Wednesday, we have a highway committee, so.
Good.
If I forget, Bill. Not a list, thanks.
You very much.
Yeah.
Okay, so. Thank you all. Um, Marcia Choffey, oh, we also have in our packet a. Marie Pennington request concerning a road issue, a culvert issue. So if you could also make sure that Highway Committee takes that up, Dave knows about it and so on. So. Thank you. Okay, Marcia Choffey, Town Head Lister. Are you on, Marcia? Your showing is muted here. There you are. Okay. I, we can't hear you. You have come off mute, but I can't hear you. No, tell you what, we'll move on and if you come back on, um let us know and we'll hear your report. Uh Chris Clark, Town Fire Chief.
Good evening.
Good evening.
A couple of things.
We, sure.
Number one, I'm sure is on your list too, is the pickup truck sale.
Yes.
Um.
And I have, I I did a brief minutes of the Fire Committee. Um, which met earlier this week. Was it last week? I can't even remember. Today's Monday, so it couldn't have been earlier this week. It was last week. Um, and the issue there was, what do we do about the thirty-year-old Ford? Pickup truck diesel that is being replaced by a new truck that we purchased. And is about to be delivered within a couple of weeks. Um, and it, what? The, the question is how, I'm looking for my note, my minutes, sorry about that. Um, the question is what we do. Or how do, how do we get the money for the used vehicle? Who do we offer it to? And a request had been made and we went through the minutes of that particular select board meeting. A request had been made that we offer it to the firefighters um to see who might be interested in bidding on it. When we looked at the minutes, um, select board minutes for, it was a December meeting, December nineteenth. Um, the the only entry on that was discuss the plan for what to do with the truck it is replacing. The chief asked for the board to allow it to be offered to fire department members first. After discussion, the approximate value of the truck will be determined and a method to sell it will be decided on. So I called Joe, who had a better recollection, more in line with Chris's. Um, but it does appear that we didn't set that method at that meeting. We didn't vote on it. So we do need to, as a board tonight, decide what to do with disposing of that vehicle. And whether we do a public bid, whether we go to the firefighters and how we set the value. Um, so Chris, would you give us what, and and there was a comment in here about the approximate value of the truck? And the Fire Committee meeting, you were telling us that you had done a a Blue Book value check and you have some information about that. So could you fill us in, please?
Sure, I I looked it up quickly. Um, Blue Book says about between three and five thousand. Um, or not three to five, five to eight, I believe it said.
Yeah.
Um, that's for fair condition, but I mean, it still runs and everything. Uh, we, we do drive it every Wednesday. We drove it from Northwood to Center Rutland. And it only starts when it wants to. It wouldn't start back up, so we had to push it in the garage and tuck it in behind engine four for the night. I went down the next day, fired right up, so we drove it back. Um, so it's a little fussy in its old age, so I don't think it's quite worth eight thousand dollars personally. But whatever you guys think, I mean, the body was rotted out. Um, Earl's did. Do minor repair. They squirted bed liner. Stuff around the entire truck on the bottom half to, so it could pass inspection two years ago, I believe it was. Um, so for, I mean, for being thirty-two years old, it's. Still runs and not horrible looking, but I mean, it's not worth, I I heard somebody in town say it was worth thirty grand the other day, so. I don't know where they get the numbers, but. I was thinking more to.
I I wanna make a motion that that the Fire Department, because we didn't vote on it.
We did not. Let's hear what Joe has to say about his recollection of a process.
Okay.
And then we'll take your motion.
Okay.
Okay.
So if I remember right, we discussed this and one of the things that I think as a board, without a vote, we kind of agreed to allow the fire. Members to have first bit dibs on the truck. And my concern at the time had been if we had three or four guys interested. It wouldn't be in the best interest of the Fire Department to have them bidding against each other on the truck. So what I had suggested was that if and when the town got ready to sell it, we establish a price. If Chris has a few members, one or two or three that are interested, we set the price. And if there's more than one, then put the names in a hat and let Mary or somebody, Sharon, somebody draw a name. It'd be fair. No, um, buddy would be treated any differently and the price would be, would be set on the truck. Um, and I, and I kind of like to do that. I like, you know, the guys, you know, there's might be some interest there. It it's a. I don't know, it's more of a keepsake and a really valuable piece of truck. I mean, I know it's old and it's and it's everything. And that's one of the older seven threes. They're, they're, they're all mechanical. There's no thrills on that truck. There's no electronics, no anything. But when you get into what Chris is talking about, the temperamental starting, um. You, it could be expensive, it could not be expensive. So I think what we need to do is just come up with a price somewhere in that range that he had, given it's.
Hey, Marcia, we'll, we'll get to you in a minute. Thanks for joining.
Okay, thanks, Mary. I don't know what happened. I had a little triangle that said that uh it didn't recognize my uh. My microphone, so I locked out, logged back. No problem. Thanks.
Okay.
Um, so.
What's, what's surprise?
What's five, six thousand would be probably plenty. It's it's.
It's toward the lower end.
Yeah.
Yep.
I mean, it's got, it could have some uh body issues and rust issues that will make it harder to inspect. Mechanically, it's probably in pretty good shape, you know, and it doesn't, Chris, do you know how many miles are on it? I always ask you this.
Uh, twenty-two thousand.
Yeah.
Wow.
Yeah, so it doesn't have a lot of miles. So that makes it kind of appealing, but once they get that old, one of the downsides to an old truck, they're hard to get parts for.
Yeah, yeah.
That's, that's one of the issues. So I don't know what your motion is, Sharon, but I I.
Well, I, I, I'd like to make a motion that it go to the Fire Department fellows first. And if it's not in wonderful shape. Uh, you know, you said between five and eight. How does six thousand sound? And then I would motion that that would be, that we would give it to the Fire Department first.
First option.
First option. And if there were more than one fireman wanting it, then Joey's idea.
At that price.
At that price.
Okay.
Put it in the half and pull it out of the half.
Okay, and and if nobody in the department wants it.
It's, it's, okay.
Then we put it out the bid like we did. I mean, I'm a little.
Is that a second?
Yes, that's a second.
Okay.
So and the reason, we just tried to sell that three fifty, which was a twenty-fourteen with a plow and sander. Dual wheel dump truck and we had it advertised for three months.
Yeah.
And we had to get somebody to come to us and said, you know, I mean, nobody, we had to go, we went door to door with it, tried to sell it. And and we couldn't get anybody to bid on it. So I think that's a fair price. I mean.
Okay, so motions, and you know enough about the truck. Chris, what do you think? Is that a fair price for the truck?
Uh, sounds good to me. Okay, yeah.
Okay, so um the motion is to offer. To sell a pickup truck to a member of the Fire Department um at the prices six thousand dollars. If there are more than one firefighter interested, we'll collect the names. And we'll draw the names from a suitable receptacle at our next select board meeting. How's that? Okay.
Second.
Which is made and seconded.
Yep.
All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Okay, so um. We need to make sure the word gets to the, um, Bill, could you send a memo to the um current roster of firefighters?
Fighter chief. I was gonna say, Chris, can you send out an email to the department? Let them know of our decision and you need an answer by the uh twenty-sixth of August, whether anybody's interested.
Okay, twenty-six, so we can take it up at the meeting on the twenty-seventh.
That fair enough?
That is fair. I can do that.
Okay, good. Okay, um, couple of other things from the uh Fire Committee meeting. We did have the um, talked about the private fire ordinance and the letters that went out. We did provide a letter, a copy of the letter to Chris. And in fact, the person who complained to him was not correct because the letter clearly said, we are not assessing any penalty at this time. And basically, all we want is for people to have their private fire hydrant systems inspected. So we know they're working. It's for their own benefit as well as the towns. Um, in the future, we just ask to make sure when Bill sends out a round of those letters that he lets um the Fire Department know. Chris in particular, so that um nobody's caught off guard. All right. So that takes care of number two. Number three, um, if you look at what's attached to the minutes. Is um, there is a copy of the Fire Department vehicle replacement schedule. And um that, we talked about that and whether it needs to be updated. And frankly, whether all of these vehicles need to be replaced or whether there are one or two that just kind of need to. You know, live out their lifetime and not be replaced. Um, a, and that's a discussion for, you know, consideration in the Fire Department and in future meetings. Of the Fire Committee and Select Board. And we also attach to it the um. Amount of money raised each year in the depreciation fund as it presently exists, which is one point three four cents. Versus what it would cause, what we would um set aside in that depreciation fund. If we increased that fire depreciation account by an additional quarter cent. Um, and against that, we show the withdrawals to pay for new equipment as the equipment schedule says. So, um, and we just heard, you know, Joe talk about whether we should be asking the voters to increase. The highway equipment depreciation fund. So these are all things, we don't need answers tonight. But these are things that will be coming up as we're uh working on our budgets in the fall. Which leads me to another issue. So this is not a. This, this is a work in progress. Let me put it that way. No motion tonight. Um, but the budget needs for the next fiscal year, we got talking about. Um, how to best replace the SCBA units. Do we do it all at once? So they're all the same year and the same company and the same model? Or do we do a couple, a couple each year? If we do it all at once, should we have a special ballot item on the town meeting budget? Should we take it from the capital improvement.
Not too long ago.
Um.
When did we replace him, Chris?
It'll be six years here pretty quick. We just had the, them all hydro tested last year, so they're good for fifteen years. Um, the reason I believe Frankie bought all new ones at once is because they came out with a new setup. So the pack would not fit our old bottles and, you know, vice versa. Um, I would like to buy, hoping they stay with the same setup for years to come. Just, you know, like we did years ago, like I would get out like five or six or seven to get hydro tested one year. And then next year, another five or six, you know, so we don't have to replace all twenty-six packs, fifty-two bottles at once. Because I mean, I think that was like two hundred and fifty thousand dollars when we did it.
Yeah.
Close to six years ago.
Yeah, so, so do you need to replace the packs already after six years? I thought the pack, the, so the, the basic pack itself has to be replaced on an earlier schedule. I thought they lasted a little longer in six years.
No, no, the packs can last forever. It's just the bottle, but the, the old packs we had. Are different than the new pack. So the new bottle won't fit in our old pack. That's why we got everything new six years ago. If they keep the bottles the same, we could keep the same pack for a hundred years if they kept the bottles the same.
All right, so you're just talking about replacing the bottles?
Correct, just bottles.
Okay, and you, and you, and there's fifty-two, we got twenty-six packs and there's two bottles for every pack for his best, right?
Correct, yes.
Okay, so, um.
All right, I made that amendment to my minutes. Okay, the bottles, not the, the whole packs.
Okay.
Um, which, you know, again, this is not something that needs to be decided tonight. It's just as we're putting the budget together, do we budget for it as a line item?
At fifteen-year lifetime, so you could end up with buying twenty, fifty-two all at once. Right. Or you buy, start, start of like. Three years early and stretch them out and replace ten a year for five years.
Right.
You know, what, what do you wanna do?
Well, let's, let's.
Well, here's.
Okay. As I said, we don't have to make a decision tonight.
But, well, you got to think, yeah, that's a big expense.
I know it is.
I, I don't wanna put anything on the ballot. I just would like to change a couple every few years. Not, we don't have to do it this year. I'm just trying to get prepared for years, the future here.
You got about what, about nine-year, their fifteen-year lifespan on the composite bottles?
Yep.
What's that?
Yeah. Yes, they're fifteen years.
Fifteen and we've had, so they're six years old now already.
Yep.
Okay, so we've got a few years to think this through because you wouldn't want to get rid of them too soon. You want to try to get most of the life out of them.
Right, we got it. Even if they were, if we got new ones, not this year. You know, we're not going to get rid of the ones that were replaced first. They'll they'll still keep them until the fifteen year thing's up, you know, so potentially we could we could have quite a few more than fifty two bottles for a short time. You know what I mean? If we get two, we're not going to just throw two away that are still good.
And down at the firehouse, you have that room set up for that, right, Chris?
Um, well, there is a room for a compressor to fill them, not to test them. They have to get sent away to get tested.
But is that part of, is that part of um, that building? I mean, if if the room's there.
The storage at both stations for the spares, there every pack has a bottle on it and every truck probably has at least one bottle. That's the way they're supposed to. So there's if you have six packs on the truck, there are six bottles on the pack and there's got to be six spares. So most of them are in transit, there may not all fit. There may be some at the station. They don't take up a lot of room for storage. I'm thinking that we should start replacing them at about twelve years and do them in three, you know. That way you would end up with, then you then you would have a progression after that. I wouldn't wait, want to do it too early. So if we started at twelve years and replace them over three by the time, so you do about a thirty year, which is about seventeen packs a year or bottles a year. And then and then when the last ones are gone at fifteen, they can no longer be refilled.
Yeah.
Your oldest ones at that point will be three years old. And then and then you'll be in that progression where you would replace them. It's kind of like the turnout gear. He replaces about five sets every year. And and the same with the pager. So because they have that unique situation where they had to buy all the bottles at once to fit the new packs. It it was a big expenditure, but you could you could start replacing them at year twelve or thirteen. So thirteen, fourteen, fifteen and and replace them all out. But it's a good idea to be thinking how we're going to do it.
Okay, right. So I'm playing duck on, but explain to me exactly what those are for.
So the F, the, do you want me to explain this, Chris? You want to do it?
Uh, take, you can take it.
Okay, so there the self contained breathing units are for in interior firefighting. The guys have to wear them anytime you're in a hazardous environment.
Okay.
It could be a hazmat situation, it could be smoke, it could be um, anything like that. So so it's required that you have the pack. What's that? Could be a dead body, which is even worse than hazardous material or smoke. I'd rather breathe either of the others. Um, so they have that in, per the requirements of NFPA, you have to have a spare bottle for every pack.
Okay.
And realistically, there's supposed to be a pack on every truck for every person on the truck. So this is, you know, it gets a little tricky, but the the department has been very lucky that we have this many. Some departments don't have a fraction of what we got. But if each one of our engines can app operate as a separate unit and they could go to a separate incident if they had to. So you you need this redundancy.
Yeah.
Um, just coming up with a schedule to replace them. Figure out a way to start replacing them two or three years before they're all done. And by the time they're no good, they're all gone and now and now you've got a stretched out schedule.
Yeah, I see.
We're about midway before I think we really need to start replacing them.
Alright. Okay, so that's what we talked about. No action required tonight. We've dealt with the pickup truck.
So I did have one question for Chris.
Sure.
Christopher, on the second page that we got here, I don't know if you have this page in front of you. I'm hoping you do. But it shows a replacement schedule in the vehicle expense um, on the last column. Do you have that? That page?
I don't have it in front of me, but I can remember what it looks like.
Okay, um, and I was just curious, it says vehicle expense and I'm not sure if um, it was what we paid for the vehicle the last time they were replaced. Is is that what those numbers are?
There's a number for what we just paid for everything on the left. And then I think there's a number on the right for what we paid for back then. Like I think forty one was like two hundred thousand.
Yeah, so this this page here. Okay. Alright, that's that's on the other page. I'm looking at the middle page and yeah, forty one was two hundred and twenty five thousand, I think we bought for that one. And in like engine two was about three fifty five. And I know that trucks have like gone nuts in the last couple of years.
Yes. Yes, they have.
Okay. Yeah, they it is, anything that you need becomes very expensive. Alright, I just may helps me understand this a little bit better. I remember we got criticized because we bought a truck that had cost us two hundred and twenty five thousand dollars, didn't have any water on it. But it's got a half a million dollars worth of tools on it.
Oh, God.
It's a toolbox on wheels and that's what it was. And then I opened a side compartment up and I showed the questioning party. Well, there's six cases of water in here for the guy, so it does have water on it. He was not human. He didn't think that was funny. Well, I was chief of that.
You know, I took a tour of the fire, the new fire station. And I, you know, I I highly recommend that the board members that haven't go on that tour because um, I I think we're the we're the people that that are responsible for that. And I just think, I mean, I was impressed at all the rooms that were in there. But I think it would might be nice if if all the board members at some point um, took the tour.
I would like to, and I was kind of hoping we could set something up, but with Matt and Kurt not here. I know Joey's been through it, but I'm sure.
Well, I was, I when I went through it, it was forms and footings.
Okay.
But I drive by it every day and the doors are open and I can look in and I know what's going on in there.
I and JP isn't on, he's clerk of the work. So um, but it would be one of those. I really still would like to go through it.
Yeah, um, so I talked to you at the beginning and now we're talking fire station. Um, the color is not what was proposed. And I don't know if there's something we should try to do about this before they leave or live with it. You guys are going to live there. The 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 upper portions in the higher part were supposed to be bronze, not green. Um, and I don't know who made that change. And I don't know if that's to the tenant's liking. Because you guys are going, you know, I kind of thought it was going to be the same color as this other siding and the whole building was going to kind of look like center. So they kind of looked alike. And I was disappointed when I found out, but no, that's the color. Because I keep waiting for them to change it.
But we went up there today. But uh, you see what we have here.
Yeah.
So we really.
No, I I understand that.
Inside. We're not going to be able to see it from the inside. So, but.
Aesthetics and uniformity is nice. And I don't know if as a board or as the the I wasn't on the building committee with mostly you guys and the fire guys, but if you'd like that a different color or like it the color it should be or something, I think now's the time to make noise about.
Well, we should have this discussion, I think, with JP.
Yes, we should. But I want to get, I want to get it out there because pretty soon that building is going to be done. And it's going to be way too late. You know, the the more they do to it, the harder it's going to be if we want that changed.
Yeah, well, I made a similar request to the fire, um, the fire committee. Please let us know if there's anything as you're going through now that needs to be changed rather than waiting till the end and we're we're at a punch list and it's, you know, really inconvenient. So same offer for the police department.
I mean, you guys go through your office.
Something now, let us know earlier rather than later, please.
Two offices are about the size of what you got for space now? Maybe one and a half?
One.
One? Okay, okay. So, but I mean, the way it's laid out, it it's one thing to look at it on a piece of paper. It's another thing to actually walk through there.
Yeah, yeah.
Close very well.
Okay.
It really does.
Good.
I, again, we went through it today. It's amazing. To my eyes, it's amazing.
Yeah, I wish I was pretty.
Yeah, I mean, when you're moving from the closet to living room, it is a big difference. Yeah, I and 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 so, but I would just it like you say, you can look at that blueprint up there to forever and it's it's hard to envision until you start walking in there and make sure.
So Bill, would you please work with JP and see if and the other select board members and see if there's a time when we can go on a tour?
Absolutely.
That would be great. And the, you know, the fire chiefs and the police chiefs, you know, they might want to come too. Yeah.
I mean, they did find a few things that didn't fit quite right, like a beam that was supposed to be hung for the taking the tank out of the pickup truck. That didn't fit where it was supposed to go.
Yeah.
But, you know, little things like that, nothing big.
I learned lesson with center when we had issues way late in the game.
You know, the mechanical stuff, anything that's going to fail, it's not going to fail until we move in and start using that stuff. We'll hope for no failures.
But things like the color and.
The color is something that I think needs to be addressed over the next month or two because I don't want you guys, I don't want it being moved into and then say, geez, we should have done it. Because I almost think the top was supposed to be the color of those desks, that table, a bronze color.
But wasn't the station itself supposed to be red?
Well, I thought it was all supposed to be red, but but Larry explained to me from the drawing he had, the lower section is the red that's there, the or whatever color and that matches center. But the higher elevations, the tower in a, the apparatus bay in the front are going, supposed to be on a bronze color. Which I don't know, but I would have thought they just made it all red and just like the other one and it looked.
Yeah.
And if and and if that could be painted to match. But there's an expense there and I don't know who foots the bill for that expense.
Well, if they made the mistake.
I don't know who authorized a change in color from what the committee accepted. So.
Okay, the issue's out there.
So that's going to be a JP question and a DMS question and a Ed Clark question as to how did we end up here?
Well, in the in, when we sold it to the voters.
I don't think we told them a color though.
I thought the picture showed it as red.
Yeah. Yeah, but I I was, you know, I kept waiting for the color to change because I thought that.
That was the insulation.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
That's what I thought it was.
Yeah, but no, that's that's and and then when I got to looking at it, um, Gary did tell me there are there are laminated panel with the with the insulation and the metal. And then I was hayin' out back and I said, oh, yeah, that's what those are. But they aren't red or whatever color. So I understand your excitement, but on the same token, if if we had other aspirations, we should try to get there.
Yeah, we want to do it right. So let us know.
Right.
Alright, thank you all. Um, so now Marcia's on, Marcia Choffey, head Lister.
Yes, I'm here. Sorry about that. I uh, had, I don't know, I had this little uh.
Oh, I'm sorry, Marcia, just a sec. Chris. Chris, thank you for your report, by the way. I know we we hopped around, but appreciate your input and thanks for meeting with us um, last week too. Okay. There we go. Did we cover everything that you wanted us to, Chris?
Yes, I'm good.
Okay, alright. Okay, yeah, so Marcia, sorry about that. Now, now you're on.
Yeah. Interesting here. Yeah, I uh, I tried to unmute myself and I came up with this triangle that said that uh, I had to update my Zoom, so I just logged off and logged back in. But anyway, um, we held grievance meetings. Uh, we had four. We have now one uh, taxpayer that is requesting a um, meeting with the BCA. So this meeting is going to have to be scheduled for no later than August twenty second. So I will contact Carrie tomorrow and we'll have to get everything going.
Okay, well, thanks for staying on top of that. So only one one grievance to the Board of Civil Authority. That's good.
No, we had four, we had four grievances to uh, to the Board of Listers, but only
Right.
one uh, taxpayer is requesting a hearing before the BCA. Yeah.
Right, so, yes, thank you.
Yep. So I will get with Carrie tomorrow so that we can get the notice out and uh, schedule the hearing.
Yeah, um. So we did receive in our packet a an expressly, an expression of interest in the open Lister position. Um, and the, um, it's from Kathleen Kapitanski and it's a resume as long, as well as the um, email that she forwarded to us. Um, what we have done in the past is invited an applicant for a position to come in and talk to the select board, um, usually just prior to the next select board meeting. So if it's your pleasure, select board members, I will um, ask Kathy to come in and talk with us in front of our next meeting on the twenty seventh.
So if we appoint her, does, what happens after that? Did she have to be on the ballot in November or does it or or?
Probably on the ballot in November.
It'll be, it'll be the same thing as when we appointed Marie last year.
Yeah.
That she had to and Matt, they both, because I think the statute says that they have to run at the next election.
Yeah.
We get not necessarily spring election. So it's the next one. And she would be running to finish out Jack's term? Or would she be running until March? Because Jack just got in in March, did he, or when was, that would be my only question.
We'll look that up. I'm pretty sure she's filling out the term. Marcia, you might know.
Yeah, Jack was up for reelection in twenty twenty three. Um, and Marie was up this year. So uh, the position that Kathy Kapitanski would um, fall into is Jack McCamly's.
Okay.
So if she ran.
Dig out. I know Kevin Brown did.
So she will know those are things that we can point out to her. So she'll understand going forward.
Okay, and Bill, would you invite her to come in for our next meeting? Well, maybe maybe just in advance of our next meeting, like half an hour or so ahead of time. Okay. Five thirty. Okay, good. Thank you for your, um, Kathy for her interest. Marcia, what else do you have for us?
Um, that's about it. Um, we've had uh, several phone calls from uh, people saying, what's going on with my taxes? Uh, so it's like, uh, I want to put a recorder on in the um, in the vestibule of the town hall saying, you know, press this button to let you know what's going on with the with the taxes. But uh, other than that, um, you know, we're gearing up for um, um, just going out to do site visits for um, people that have uh, indicated to us that they have finished or will be finishing up outbuildings or pools or, you know, whatever um, improvements to their um, properties um, this fall, so that we don't fall into having to run around next uh, April to do all these site visits.
Okay.
And that's about it.
Any question, any questions for Marcia?
No, it's, will Marcia be here when we um, or should she be here when we interview um, this lady that's interested?
Um, trying to think of what we have done in the past.
I don't, I think usually we do it.
I think we just do it, yeah.
I don't, I can't remember. Doesn't matter.
Stop in briefly and chat with Marcia and I invite you to do the same.
I can be available if you want me to. So, you know, whatever way.
Okay.
Okay?
Thanks, Marcia. Yeah, appreciate that.
Well, yep. Good night.
Good evening. Alright, Carrie Clerk, town clerk and treasurer.
Good evening.
Um, hey, Carrie.
Hi. So let's see, I don't really have a whole lot tonight other than um, reminder that I mean, some of the things I have to talk about tonight, you already talked about. So the election is tomorrow.
Twenty six.
Right, right.
Um. Didn't say that.
Should I keep talking?
Yeah, I think, yes, Bill muted the other speaker.
Okay. Alright, let me back. So there's an election tomorrow. It's the primary election. Um, I put sample ballots on Facebook today at the request of a resident or a voter. Um, I also put some reminders there. Um, so polling. Um, I also put some reminders there. Um, so polling places will be open as usual, seven to seven. Um, the only thing voters really need to, uh, recognize is that they are going to be handed three ballots. And they are to choose one to vote on and two to discard in a box that will be at their polling place. And then they submit the, um, voted one into the tabulator, which will get counted. Um, they are going to be given the, uh, ballot that goes with their district. Rutland Town was broken into District Two and District Four. So depending on where they live, they have been assigned a district and those are the ballots that are within their district. Um, and also a reminder that we are voting on candidates for the November ballot for state. Um, uh, state parties, what, what is the?
This is basically the part, yeah. This is the party primaries. So you're, you're voting in your party for your candidates. That's the way I look at it.
Yeah. Um, so I reminded people that we are not voting for president yet. A lot of people do think that that will be in November. Um, that will, uh, I believe, I'm pretty certain that those ballots in November are going to be sent out by the state. Um, and that is going to happen very shortly after, um, I'm going to say September, they're going to start with, um, files and stuff. So it's gonna, it's gonna be like one ends and another one begins. So I'll have more information on that when we move forward. Um, so that's tomorrow. Um, and then just like Marcia was saying, we are, we, we expected it. We're getting a lot of inquiries about the tax bills that were sent out and are starting to hit people's houses. Um, they were sent out last week and I'm pretty sure it's been nonstop. Um, phone calls and emails of why is this happening? And, um, I guess I, I've been sending out the same type of email as a response. And just like Marcia said, if we could put something on a recorder, um, somebody hit the button. That's pretty much how we feel. Um, again, if you read the newspaper, if you've been following state news and also our own town news, um, you know that it is across the state in the education area. That's why your taxes are going up. In particular, Rutland Town's tax rate, um, for the town went down. It's primarily the education that kind of jacked everything up. Um, when people call me or email me, um, I'm asking them, first of all, if they knew anything about that particular piece, because that's the primary reason. But before they call me, if they do hear this, um, this meeting tonight, do a couple of things. If it's not that that you're concerned about, you don't think that that's why your taxes went up, compare it to last year's. Did you file your homestead? We had a lady come in today. She had no idea what was going on. She never filed her homestead and that's something every Vermonter has to do. Um, in the, in the previous years, when you file, for this lady, she filed, she got a lower homestead rate and actually, um, was eligible for a state payment last year. So once she does that, um, this year she'll see a difference in her taxes. So that's one thing that you can do is ask yourself, did you file that? If not, that is something that you need to do. Um, and then also look at, um, uh, did you have any changes in your, um, financial situation? I had a man reach out. He's like, why did I not get this amount of money like I did last year? Well, first of all, it's not the town clerk's office that deals with that. It's your income taxes when you file in the springtime. Um, then the state determines whether or not you're going to get money to help up, um, from the state onto your property taxes. It's not us that determines that. It's actually what you're filing for your income taxes. So if you have a change in your finances, that's something that is beyond our control. So if you don't get a state payment, you don't get a state payment. Um, not all states do that. So we should feel lucky that we have that opportunity. Um, so those are some things. And also did you happen to change like um, the portion of your, your house? Are you using it as a business now? Look at all those sort of things and see what, um, was the change before you call and say, why did my taxes go up? Look at all of those things and then consider the education rate. That is a big deal. So, um, if we didn't do it on purpose, I want people to know that. Um, in fact, a lot of the money is not staying with us. So it, I, I feel pretty good that we kept our budgets down low and it, it is what it is. It's just something that we all have to deal with and it's not just in Rutland Town.
Okay. Good pieces of advice, Carrie. Thank you.
Mm-hmm. Um, other than that, I really, I don't have anything. It was just the elections and the tax bills I wanted to talk about.
Yeah. Um, let me, let me move to action item A, which is sort of, you were involved because, um, you were the, um, convener of the Board of Abatement and Marcia's still on. So if she can put Don on, um, the Board to Consider Abatement of De minimis amounts of delinquent tax.
I think he's got, got muted.
Delinquent taxes. Yeah, it's okay now.
Yes, I'm on Mary.
Okay. Thank you, Don. When the Board of Civil Authority or the Board of Abatement, excuse me, met, um, at the end of our session, Don presented us with the request and, uh, that the BCA, the Board of Abatement, allow him to not have to collect small amounts of taxes, back taxes owed of $10 or less. And we also found a new statute which allows that request, a de minimis amount, the request to be made to the governing body, the legislative body, the, the select board. So the Board of Abatement agreed and passed a motion that, um, basically they recommended to the select board that small amounts of delinquent taxes under $10 be, um, abated just automatically. Um, so I wanted to put that on our agenda because they are, they have passed it to us and it's actually the select board now under the new law that can abate this. Did I explain that correctly, Don and Carrie?
Yes.
As far as I'm concerned, you, you explained it exactly correct.
Okay. Um, so that's what I would like the Board to consider. It's the request of the Board of Abatement, and if there's a motion, all the better.
Are we going to do it as a three-person board? Or do you want to wait till we have the full board? Or is it that big a deal?
I don't think it's that big a deal.
Yeah.
Well, I'd move to.
And I second it.
Do what you said.
Okay, so.
I can't repeat all.
Charlie moves and Sharon seconds that we.
And Mary will explain it.
Abate, abate, um, the amount of delinquent taxes, um, for small amounts of $10 or less.
Okay.
Okay. And take that action as the select legislative body of the town. Any discussion?
Nope.
All in favor of the motion? Please say aye.
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 Aye. Motion carries three, two, zero, zero. Okay. So there, we've taken care of those little, little amounts, Don. So that frees you up for all of the other ones, right?
Well, thank you very much. And you know, that decreases your delinquent property taxpayer list by about eighty, eighty numbers, which is fairly significant out of 240. So we're working on the other 140 pretty hard. So.
Um, Don, I have a, a quick question while Carrie's on too. I received a phone call from Pradico's Landscaping about a, um, a delinquent amount that was a very small amount that was paid two or three times. And then as I was signing the, the orders, bills and warrants, I noticed a refund going to Pradico's. Is that the refund of this, this amount?
Well, it's a long story, Mary, and it's a little complicated, but I'll simplify it by saying that not every taxpayer knows the process of, of collection, number one, and not every taxpayer is aware that there are dates that are sensitive, number two. And because of both of those considerations, plus the fact that Pradico's is under new management and I guess, you know, it's a learning curve. Uh, not only was there a check that was presented to us, uh, firstly, uh, covering both personal property and real estate, which is a no-no because it takes, well, the way the system works, it, it's very cumbersome to try to separate those amounts out. That's number one. And number two, uh, because of a late payment, um, of one of the payments, uh, there was interest added and, uh, and carried forward and the taxpayer did not realize that when the late payment is made, that the interest is subtracted from the principal. So therefore you end up with a principal payment that's still due. And she was wondering why she still owed on her principal if she made her payment on time, the next payment. Well, the next payment has nothing to do with the previous payment, which was late and therefore carried over and had interest added. And I'm trying to work this situation out with them and we will get it resolved. It's a, it's a small account and it's, it's some natural errors that occur on behalf of taxpayers. And sometimes it's errors on my part as well, but, um, we'll get it resolved. Um.
Okay. She did say that she tried to call you, but your voicemail box is filled. So you might want to check that.
Right. Well, I was on vacation and it got loaded up. So.
That's what happens. Okay. Well, I will, if she calls me tomorrow, I'll let her know the topic came up and you'll be working with her. And also that there appears to be some refund check coming to her.
The refund check would be if, if we get it resolved the way I expect it to be resolved, I think she'll have a refund check of $40 and some 64 cents coming to her. Uh, which certainly will not bankrupt either the town or me. And I'd be happy, I'd be happy to get this situation resolved because I've already spent way more time on it than I'd like to.
Yes. Well, I did start with, if this is under $10, we're going to take care of it tonight. But since it was $40, that didn't work. Yeah. Okay. Thank you, Don, very much.
Out of the 40 and then give her a $30 refund, but I guess I can't do that. But thank you, uh, thank you, Board, for approving that de minimis, uh, abatement. That'll, uh, that'll make the delinquent list much more in keeping with our town's policies and procedures because we have a very low delinquent tax rate.
Okay. Thanks, Don. And Carrie, do you have anything else or do any of us have any questions for Carrie?
I do not have anything else.
Okay. Um, good luck at the election tomorrow. Um, I'm doing the morning shift up at school and I think Sharon's with me. So um, we'll see a bunch of voters maybe tomorrow. And, um, thank you very much. Have a good rest of your evening.
Yes, you too.
Okay. Bill Sweet, Town Administrator. Welcome back.
Thank you.
Right.
All right. So a few things came in that are on your desks to, uh, to go through. Uh, the first, um, Mary is the correspondent from Kevin.
Yes, the rescission of the sewer maintenance agreement. You will remember that, uh, the new car wash, Eco Car Wash, um, asked to be relieved of its obligation under the, um, a letter, a memorandum of understanding that essentially said the previous owners of Eco Car Wash and the owners of the Denny's property had to work together to clean out a sewer drain and keep it clean and, um, go on an annual, um, inspection and cleaning program and to share costs for that cleaning. Um, we turned the matter over to town attorney who essentially advised with, with, if there's been no problem, and, and we heard from Dave Sears, there has been no problem here. Um, since the previous owner of the Ecos, um, Car Wash property has been out of business. There's not an existing problem that would require this agreement to remain in place. Anyway, we have the underlying sewer maintenance agreement. Should there be a problem in the future, that will kick in and we could come back against whichever property owner presents a problem. So, um, we had, at your, at your instruction, I don't think it was you, at your instruction last two weeks ago, I got ahold of Kevin and said, whatever you need to do to clear this up, what they want to do to clear it up is to do a formal rescission of sewer maintenance agreement. And they want it approved by the select board and signed on me on behalf of the select board. So that's the two-page document you have, page and a half that you have in front of you. So what's your pleasure? Basically, it says we're rescinding that MOU, but we're reminding you that you're still subject to, um, our ordinance regarding use of public sewers. This is where somebody makes a motion.
So we're basically relieving the property where the car wash is from this original agreement, but Denny's will still be compelled to.
I believe this is rescinding both properties.
Both properties.
Yeah. So if you look at number two at the bottom of the page.
So they're both going to be off.
So they're both off.
Well, I guess this, we're protected that if we find an issue, we can go back and say, look, you're messing up here.
It sounds like, under our existing ordinance, because that doesn't go away.
As long as they understand.
We're protected that. I mean, I'm not sure who was causing the issue or if either one, what it was, it was the joint effort. And have we heard anything from Denny's about this or were they informed of this?
No, we're doing this unilaterally. So we're just lifting the obligation from both of them.
And then.
If that's what you choose to do.
And then our highway crew, Public Works Department is going to keep an eye on things down there and make sure that we don't have a problem. Of course, it'll be much easier now to determine where the problems coming from.
Yes.
I mean, I'll move to accept the letter of recession as presented by Kevin and authorized board chair to sign on behalf of the town.
Second.
Questions made and seconded. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Sharon's aye, I'm aye. So it's three, zero, zero. Um, motion carries and I'm signing. It's the 12th. Okay. So that's in the packet. Thank you, Bill.
Thank you. Uh, the next item, number two, is from the Regional Planning Commission. It is the contract for them to help us update our local hazard mitigation plan. So we have a grant for this, which funds a big portion of that cost. Uh, the last meeting, we had accepted them as the, uh, vendor for this after Marty and I reviewed the proposals we received. And, uh, that is their standard contract for services for us to move on.
They were the low.
They were.
Okay. So let's see. Proposal from the Regional Planning Commission to, um, for some not to exceed $9,852.79 to perform our To perform our hazard mitigation. Um, work, is there a motion?
So it's, I think it was ninety-eight hundred dollars is roughly their cost, uh, we, we do have a match. Uh, but the time that Marty and I spend working on it counts as an in-kind match, so it'll reduce our financial obligation.
And you folks.
Terms of this contract with the Regional Planning Commission.
authorize someone to sign.
Oh, do I have to do that?
Yep.
Yep.
Anybody, or would you like to?
Would be willing to.
authorize Mary to sign on behalf of the town.
Motion's made, maiden seconded to approve the proposal from the Rutland Regional Planning Commission. Uh, any further discussion? If not, all in favor, please say aye. Sharon?
Hi.
Hi, motion carries three, zero, zero, and I'm signing.
Great, thank you, uh, so, uh. Number three for Hittl Terrace, we're gonna send that to the Highway Committee for Wednesday morning?
Yeah, I, I'd just like to point out a little something on the back here that annoys me. There's a sentence here that there was an article in the Rutland Herald, said that recently the town collected too much in taxes last year. And it's had a surplus, and that's an erroneous statement, the town did not collect too much in taxes, we collected. What we were required to collect in taxes to operate our budgets, what was in excess was a one percent amount. That we have nothing, no control over its amount, so I don't want people out there thinking that the Board of Select Persons in this town. Is taxing them for budgets in excess of the amount requested, that, I don't like that statement at all.
Okay.
And we will talk about it Wednesday.
Uh, we took care of number four, and uh the next is um, an invitation. From the Car Wash, uh, they're holding their grand opening on Wednesday, August twenty-first. And would, eh, they are extending an invitation to town personnel to attend. So if anyone, any town personnel would like to attend, August twenty, uh, first at ten AM at the Car Wash.
Alright, thank you very much.
Uh, next, number six you have is, uh, comes from.
Well, could we do a little letter, remember Josh used to do letters, welcome, welcoming them to town and thanking them and so on.
Yep, I ha- I do have, I do have that template still, so yes, I gotta, we gotta, we got a couple we gotta put together, so.
Thank you.
Uh, absolutely, uh, there is, uh, the number six is uh from uh JP. Um, he had asked, um, so he has a timesheet which calculates his reimbursement rates for him automatically. Uh, and he was asking for it to be changed from what it currently is, which is sixteen twenty-seven to. Uh, nineteen eighty-nine, uh, he needed, he said, this, this was voted on by the board, I couldn't find anything, and. So, brought to you guys to.
If I recall, it was part of the budget process where, when we did the budgets last fall. In that rate was up, so I don't think it was done specifically, we just accepted the budget with the increase, would be my.
Yeah, I, I think you're right.
I, I believe that was the um, the way we were, we were gonna do that, so. I guess we need a motion to do that.
That would be good.
Alright, um, I'd move that we um, in what we, it's the um. Mileage expense or the hourly.
It's the hourly rate.
Hourly vehicle reverse reimbursement for its second constable, um, be adjusted to the, and I don't, what was the amount, Bill?
Nineteen, nineteen eighty-nine.
Nineteen eighty-nine.
Yeah.
Per hour.
Per hour, yeah.
My motion's been made to.
Second.
Go with the updated FEMA rate and seconded any discussion? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
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 You just talking, Mary?
The motion carried three, zero, zero.
Excellent, yeah, thank you, so we'll take care of that, uh, and the next thing, uh, we received. Uh, from.
And could you make sure Carrie gets a copy of that so she knows?
Well, we'll, we, we attached the minutes to those for, yeah, uh, the, there is a Vermont two-hundred-and-fiftieth anniversary commission. And uh, there was a letter there explaining what they're doing, and there is a, they sent a template. For a resolution uh for towns to be a part of the commemoration, and they listed on, on the letter, they list all the towns that have already adopted it. Uh, and it has been updated to reflect us specifically, if you would like to adopt it.
So this is two-hundred-and-fifty years that Vermont has been a state, right?
Yes.
You're an independent country for how long?
We were twelve years, I think.
Twelve years, yeah.
You know what's fun is to tell people from Texas that really, really twirks them out, they, they were the only ones.
We were, yeah, we were, after the civil, after Revolutionary War, we were an independent country.
Yeah.
And then we became the uh thirteenth state, right? Fourteen state.
Had to wait until a southern, a, a slave state joined, and we were the balance.
Cause it was the original colonies, and we were the next state.
Right, yeah. Okay, so what's your pleasure?
And one time we belonged to part of New Hampshire and part of New York, too, they each laid claim to us.
Yeah, the Westminster massacre came about because of that confusion.
Right, I think Canada wanted us too, cause we were gonna be part of, yeah, we were gonna be part of Canada for a while.
Which is an option, yeah. Ethan, Ethan or Ira Allen was negotiating with Canada, and then this other thing fell into place, that's called the United States.
Yeah, and then we got to be part of the United States, otherwise we could have been our own little country sitting here.
Could have, you know, bidding on the Olympics and stuff like that. Okay, um, so, and there's no specific, shall we hold this over till the rest of the select board can see it? Yeah.
Is there a deadline?
There, there is, uh, no, no, we, we, we can do it, eh, we, if, if it was going to be adopted, it has to be bu- at the next meeting.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so we'll, I'll stick it back in the file then.
Okay.
But this is, this is nice, I don't expect a lot of controversy. Um, okay, what else do we have?
Uh, you had a fire committee about the changes to the ordinance, did you wanna go over that now, or do you wanna wait for a different time?
Cause we didn't really, no.
That was it?
Okay, um, a couple of things on the desk, oh, there's the. Where's the letter, okay. Um, we have a couple of things. I did mention Marie Pennington's email concerning a covert, and I think Joe's gonna raise that with the Highway Committee.
Yep.
If you don't have that one, there it is.
I kept it, right?
Okay, um, we have the invitation, and we congratulate Eco Car Wash on their o- upcoming opening. And thank them for, you know, being in our town, uh, we've done the. Rescission of the maintenance agreement on the sewer, we've taken care of.
Everything but the minutes from three meetings.
I know, well, we'll get there, we do have.
Eventually, all of us will be here.
Um, State of Vermont notification of a public hearing. Um, this is for a hazardous waste storage facility permit, which is being sought by Green Mountain Power. Um, and it is a facility, I believe, in Rutland City.
Yes, it is.
So.
We're a neighbor, which is why we got that.
Right, we, we're in a, a adjoining town municipality, so if, um, if Barbara, well, let's do this.
They have a co- the planning commission got them a copy too, yeah.
Okay, so just see if they think it's something we need to participate in at all, and I'd appreciate that. And there's information about that, we'll put that back there, we have two thank you notes. One is from Will Fuller, who says, thank you for providing me with this amazing scholarship, it will be put to good use. Will was one of our um scholarship recipients, uh, this year, thank you voters for approving the money. And also, and a thank you note from Ben Saretta. Um, he was honored to receive the scholarship, and he's appreciative of our generosity and support. Um, and it goes, actually, he wrote a very nice letter, so you might wanna.
It'll be added, it'll be added to the board, yeah.
We're gonna put him up on the board, sorry. Um, what else do we have? Uh, let's see, any other items, we've kind of been over, we did fire committee. Um, other committee reports, I don't think anyone else met, we do need to meet an executive session. Um, for, let's see, some legal. Um, update, we have a, a personnel matter, a pending investigation. And I think, and um, and a couple of legal updates from Town Council, so. It, with all of that in mind, if someone would like to make a motion, and for the first part, we'd ask Chief Dumas to stay in. Okay.
Shall move.
Motion's made and seconded to go into executive session, non-debatable, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Joe.
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries, we're in executive session. Okay, um, okay, we're out of executive session at eight seventeen, is there any motion?
Motion adjourned.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to adjourn, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion, meeting is adjourned, thank you all very much.